Unless it's not in your way.
We'll see what happens to it.
All right.
Jan, can we just clarify? I don't think there's a third member of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, so I don't have a quorum. Is that right?
That is correct so far. Well, yeah, you have Jeff, Jeff and Brian.
Oh, is Jeff there? That's what I wasn't sure.
Yes, Jeff Goodrich is there. So you've got three.
Okay, then we are three. Okay, thanks.
Can we see Jeff Lu Bell? Is it phone?
Yeah, I'm on my phone. I'm sorry. I'm in Cambridge, Massachusetts today.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, and I can let Jeff announce a regular or a special meeting of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee when we get to that topic, maybe. Jeff, we've got a couple business items to do as the Planning Commission first.
Well, I would just say, Jan, that we do have a quorum here now of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, so we are also in session. It's a special meeting.
Yep. Okay, and we have Christian. So we are doing well on the Planning Commission as well. All right. Hi, Christian. All right, I would entertain a motion around the agenda.
Remove the agenda be approved?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? I just would remind everybody or point out to anybody that didn't notice yesterday, I amended the agenda because we had two candidates ready for review. So I hope that's what item seven is, to drop into executive session to discuss them. We will take a look after item five. We'll do a time check relative to capital planning because the executive session is a higher priority at that stage, but we'll see where we are.
Yeah, Jan, we also, since we'll be using your public comment as our public comment, we could also just entertain a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Subcommittee agenda.
Okay.
Brian, Brian moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff Goodrich seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, on the Planning Commission side, all those in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, thank you. Public comment for items not on the agenda? I do not see public. If there's no public in the meeting room there, then we're not. Okay. So correspondence, we did not, I can't remember actually whether the packet had anything else in it. Ernie?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a point of order or whatever, but what I've recently learned for meetings is now when you have a hybrid meeting like this, you have to have each person record their vote. In other words, you have to ask each person what, how they vote.
If it's, yeah, if it's not unanimous, if it's not unanimous, a roll call vote.
Okay, I didn't know that part about.
If it's, if it's hybrid, even if it's, if it's hybrid but unanimous, you can do that. The minute it is not unanimous, it must be a roll call.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no problem. I'm definitely still learning on that one myself. Okay, let's move to planning and bylaws overview now. I just wanted to give some context to the conversation. We agreed at the last meeting that this meeting would be a working session on two substantive topics: affordable housing, specifically zoning bylaws as they relate to, or possibly limit, infill housing in the village. That was the very specific, which is good to be specific because then we can get a working session and actually get some teeth in it. My question for this group and why I put this topic in first was again to try and go up to 5,000 feet just for a minute and look at the, at what we're trying to do. Because we kind of have two choices broadly. We can do surgical changes to zoning bylaws, for example. We can talk about, so we have solar siting, both town plan, fairly surgical changes to the town plan. What we're going to talk about next is specific zoning bylaws issues around housing. There's some updating required based on state law changes on several fronts. So there's kind of a tactic where we say, what do we need, what do we need to propose for changes for very specific reasons? That's, that's one piece of work. But there's another avenue that's more start with a plan, have an overview of a plan, look at the big picture of the plan, and then use that to add context and guide things. So specifically and interestingly, I was looking at the town plan, at our town plan recently, and there's a whole section, it starts on page seven of our town plan, future land use. And then it has future land use, proposed zoning districts and definitions. And so if we wanted to start with the plan, rather than more surgical, either plan or bylaws changes, it would make sense to say, hey, let's run through that future land use section of the plan and see, you know, whether it's time to update it or look at things in a bigger picture. So that's, that's really my question to the group before we jump into a very specific topic about zoning bylaws, infill housing in the district. Are we looking to really relook at significant portions of the plan? Or do we kind of have our marching orders of specific changes we want to make? So I would just, I would just throw that out. I don't want to complicate things, but I don't want us to dive down a rabbit hole prematurely. Anybody?
Jan, we've been talking in the solar siting about the challenges of taking on anything significant with the town plan rather than just doing surgical adaptations. And so I, but I think there's a, you know, there's the concern of incrementalism. If you're going to start to incrementally make multiple changes, at one point, are you impacting the broader whole and a different, and that could be problematic?
Jeff?
Jan, my perspective is that where the Planning Commission was before you joined, we were talking about new zoning districts that contemplated housing possibilities that our zoning ordinance and subdivision regs may not currently allow. And I think we're back in that place. So I think with respect to housing, generically, affordable housing perhaps specifically, that's a topic I think we should look at with respect to both zoning and subdivision regulations.
Mm-hmm. If, if we are, if we start talking about, am I right? If we started to talk about potentially redrawing zoning, redefining and redrawing zoning district boundaries, does that blossom into a, into a huge task? You just can't stop it from swelling up into a year or two as soon as you start redrawing zoning districts. Am I wrong in that assumption?
This is Jeff Lu Bell. Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Which, which is that, I mean, I do think that if you were to comprehensively look at zoning districts and really try to assess your options and all of that, that could take a lot of time. You know, but there could be ways to increase density without, you know, on a more surgical basis. You could, for example, you know, keep the current districts and increase the density within the current districts, change the formula in the rural residential, or you could even create like an overlay zone for the water district or something that would redraw all the other boundaries. I mean, there are things that you could do that would be more surgical and faster if we wanted to, or if you wanted to.
Mm-hmm. Jeff Goodrich?
I was going to comment, Jan, so on your question about timing, I agree with Jeff Lu Bell that there may be other ways to look at this. But if the Planning Commission is going to undertake a paradigm where we change zoning or subdivision regulations, we've got to go through a process of vetting those changes and then presenting them to the public through a series of sessions, engaging Two Rivers to take a look with respect to state law. And then once we're done with the entire review and public process, submit it to the Select Board to do the same thing. So to answer your question, it is a, you know, at least 18 month, maybe two year process regardless of what we do.
So in that sense, it's, it's worth doing enough to make that worthwhile, I guess, is the point. It's not doing so much that you double that amount of time. Brian?
Yeah, sure. I think the town needs to have the broader conversation. But there, there really are discrete things that even with the inclusive public process that Jeff describes, could be done much more quickly, thinking specifically of accessory zoning events, to comply with the new state law on that issue. And even to go beyond that, as the state law encourages, is not technically complicated and could be done with not too much of a process wrapped around it. So it just depends what you want to undertake and how long you want to wait to have some of those smaller issues come into force. Like the longer you wait on things like that, it's more time that you're out of compliance with state law and more likely that a new regional plan will come into force, that you'll also be out of compliance with. So you kind of got to balance the like cohesiveness of the task with, with how much you really care about getting some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that is, that is well put. I think that's the issue and that's the balance we'll try to strike. So maybe if nobody has any, any strong feelings on that broad topic, I think what, what people are saying is right, that if we, let's continue to dive into the changes that are needed, whether there's solar siting, or there's housing, or there's state law, and then we will see as those come out of the fog and get well better understood, we'll say, okay, this is how big a chunk we should grab, and now is the time to package it up and show it to the public, or we may do it in pieces. Jeff Lu Bell?
Yeah, again cognizant of the fact that on the one hand, we want to have a broad conversation and we want to be thorough, but on the other hand, we want something to happen soon. I'm wondering whether there could be some options that we could think about that would allow for action sooner. And I actually am not sure how it works, you know, do we have the ability, for example, to grant special use permits or variances in response to particular requests? So if somebody needed an exception while we were working on the broader zoning, we would have the ability to grant it? And if not, maybe that could be something that could be adopted, the ability to apply for that kind of variance so that, you know, if you're going to take, that could be done quickly, right? And then, and then you could, you could spend more time kind of getting the particulars of the, you know, of the byright zoning to your liking.
Huh. I don't know the answer to that. Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, so DRB is the quasi judicial decision maker. So currently, if you have an existing zone that allows permitted use or a conditional use, you can apply anytime. If you don't have either permitted use or a conditional use, then you can apply for a variance. That's, that paradigm currently exists.
So just to be clear, Jeff, if you want to do four units an acre and the baseline zoning is one unit an acre, you can apply for a variance?
So anything that's not permitted or allowed by conditional use, you can apply for a variance. However, depending on density or lot size, Jeff, I'm not sure. You know, if it's downtown, what you just described is going to be problematic. If it's anywhere but downtown, there are other factors that weigh in that may allow the DRB to approve it.
Yeah, so I guess, again, it's not something we're going to resolve tonight, but I guess one question I would ask, is there a way to kind of streamline the process, right? So that while we're working on the particulars, if, for example, someone came in and they wanted to do, you know, turn one of the houses in the village center into a multifamily, you know, home for five people, right? And we don't currently allow that, that we can make it clear that they have the ability to apply for it. We could give some standards or something about, about how they would get that so that, so that, that we're not, you know, the fact that it's going to take us two years doesn't prohibit that from moving forward. That's just my, kind of the broad question that I'm asking.
Yeah, so if somebody had a, Jan, if somebody had a downtown building that could accommodate multifamily units hypothetically, which is not allowed, you could, that applicant could file for variance. The DRB in theory could grant that variance. And the only thing from my perspective that may impede that process is if Penn and Butter appeals that and goes to the environmental court. But it's theoretically possible that that could be applied for and granted.
Right, okay. So I think that's a good piece of information just to have in our minds. I think part of what comes into that is that it's the DRB that makes that decision. But what we as the Planning Commission might do is make the DRB aware that we are moving in this kind of direction, that we're having conversations and we are intending to, or that there's a state law that requires us to, you know, to somehow give preliminary guidance or information to the DRB so that when they are considering such a variance, they have that as part of their, in their heads. But okay, that's, that's a good piece of information. Thank you. All right, so why don't we transition into the, into that question for the, to switch to the next agenda items, zoning bylaws relating to housing? So can we agree first that we're going to bound at least tonight's question? And I think it's a, it's a working session, so you know, it may take a number of hours. I don't know. Mary, are you, are you talking? Okay. But we, the, the item on the table specifically was to really, to list and capture and discuss current bylaws as they relate to housing and affordable housing within the village. And I suppose there's, there's the village, our village center. There may be some that are in common with other village centers, you know, they're not official village centers like, you know, West Norwoodshire Union Village, but there may be differences. But the point is, what are the zoning tools that we could improve on that would help with infill housing in the village? So that's our, that's what's on the table. And I think, I know Jeff, well, the Jeffs maybe as a starting point, had, you know, it was clear that you could kind of give us five or six things just to throw down on the table to help prime the pump sort of, whether those are state laws we have to catch up on, or obvious, we don't allow multifamily. You know, for me certainly, it would be helpful to hear a few specifics to understand what we're talking about. Yeah, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, Jan, I think I appreciate your reference to villages, S with parentheses. And I think to me, they're the two issues at foot in terms of when you say bylaws, we're talking about zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation. I think the question of zoning ordinance, like our last Planning Commission meeting, is, you know, what is it we want to do with certain parcels of land where the infrastructure exists? What's the highest and best use that could be, you know, transportation quarters, utility quarters, you know, et cetera, proximate to the village? When you talk about the sub-villages, if you will, the broader question is, to the extent there's a possibility of density, how do we realize that and in what manner? And I think we can't get away from what our subdivision regulations currently present with respect to constraints for, for density. In short, our subdivision regulations, which I was a part of in about 1995, basically measure the distance from Tracy Hall, talk about the type of road, et cetera, as a baseline for establishing conventional density and I'm going to say planned residential unit or cluster density. So the broader question then is if a site has the capacity for some other density, what needs to change in both our zoning and in our subdivision rigs?
Okay. So density is one question. And then, and just to note that, and we've also heard reference to ADUs and we've heard reference to multi, multi-use and multifamily. Jeff Lu Bell, is your hand up from leftover or new?
No, it's new. I mean, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit here. I, I do, I would agree with, I think we should let, certainly let Brian talk about ADUs. He's done a lot of good analysis about the ways in which our policies are out of compliance with state law. But I would suggest in addition to that, that probably the single most important thing that we can focus on is increasing the allowable density. So I would agree with Jeff. You know, I do think, you know, there was an old paradigm that our, you know, our zoning laws and lots of other zoning laws were written under where, you know, we would just try to define these districts and create these perfect neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. But there's really been a shift since we developed these rules and how the state of Vermont thinks about density, how the rest of the country thinks about density. There's now a minimum density in Vermont in areas where there's, you know, wastewater treatment plants. And while they don't technically apply to us because we don't have, you know, wastewater, the spirit applies to us, right, which is that, you know, why, why should we impose these limitations on what people can do with their land, if they could, if they can get access to wastewater? And that is a huge limitation. So, but it's not, that's why we're not going to see a floodgate. Why not allow, for example, people to do multifamily, you know, dwellings in the village center or allow somewhat higher density, you know, in the water district or in, you know, along Route Five and River Road and places, you know, that are close, really close to town? So I would hope that we could really spend some time looking at our baseline density and increasing it to just make it easier for people to, to just create a more diverse mix in housing.
Okay, so, so far I have density, ADUs, multi-use and multifamily. Maybe, yeah, Brian, if you could give us a summary on ADUs, we can kind of go down this list and add to it, but flesh it out some.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Yeah, so as Jeff mentioned, I took a look at this issue over the past couple of weeks. And don't want to like preempt things too much. It's hard to talk in an abstract without looking at the text. And so, you know, hopefully at our next Subcommittee meeting, we'll look at a memo on this issue that we'll then pass along to you. So we could actually, you know, be looking at some language together. But both, both, that Ford and Stratford have undertaken revisions of their ADU sections in their zoning with the help of Two Rivers since the change to state law. And both of those towns really stripped their sections down to be quite similar to what the state does and in minor areas be more pervasive. Again, as I said, the state law anticipated and encourages. So we could do something very similar without leadership from Two Rivers, although of course Kyle, I'm sure, would be more than happy to review our work. The one, right now, our section of zoning bylaw, ADUs, like sprawls over at least two pages. And, and you know, if you are applying for an ADU in town, you'd be hard pressed to know which provisions apply to you. And in fact, Kyle would probably not even look at, at our regulations and just rely on state statute instead. So there's a lot we can do in terms of just stripping away excess complications. But something that you might not expect that could be very powerful in supporting ADU development, especially in town, is the section that's not on ADUs, but that's on parking, minimum parking, which is in, applies to all kinds of zoning uses. And we require two parking spaces for every dwelling. So if you have a home, you know, on Carpenter or Keeson, it has two parking spaces and you want to add in two, all of a sudden, you've got to figure out not just where to put the ADU, but where to put two more parking spaces. And that is a big, big barrier on lots that are quite small, but would otherwise be quite perfect for ADUs because they're, because they're so central to town. So there's, there are a number of things that we could do on the ADU section specifically. But I would say, don't forget about parking because it's really a constraint when you think about in-town.
Yeah, so Jan, if I may, I appreciate what both Jeff and Brian said. You know, to the extent, I might differ a little bit on the question of parking, but the DRB has the ability to waive site plan revisions to the extent they're required. If we're talking about a basic ADU and subdivision, I haven't seen the DRB addressing the park, minimum parking requirements in that context. In other words, I haven't seen the DRB say, we better do site plan review for an ADU, which is a, it's like a subdivision. Nonetheless, I agree with the point.
Okay, interesting. So Brian, it sounds like shortly you will, you and then the Affordable Housing Subcommittee will roll up some specifics around ADUs using Two Rivers and a couple other towns and say, look, here's, here are some specific proposed changes to our ADU section that would be in keeping with state law and that.
Yeah, yeah, yes, absolutely, Jan. I think what's important to note and we'll, we'll do this explicitly, say, if you, if you want to promote ADUs, here's what you do. But there are other things that Planning Commission could do to push the ADU conversation closer to the affordable housing conversation. Because, because even if you're promoting the development of ADUs, you're not necessarily promoting affordable housing. And even more so, you're not even necessarily promoting rental housing. You might just be creating new units for existing homeowners. And we as a town don't have a mechanism for, for understanding to what extent that's happening today or, or to what extent it would happen in the future if we had more ADUs. So we can get you policy controls for ADUs to get more, to incentivize more ADUs. But, but there's a, there's a gap there that if you want to, if you want to push it further there, there are other ways and other policies that you could explore to make it perhaps more valuable to the kind of goals that the town plan and the housing strategy set out.
Okay, no, that's very interesting. Mary, just a second, I wanted to. Okay. No, that's very interesting. Mary, just a second. I wanted to to summarize that. So I do think that's a broad topic to capture because we have most of what we're talking about here is to encourage housing in the village or, you know, whatever we're talking about, to encourage housing. Then there is this separate and important thing that says, how do you make that be the kind of housing you want? Or how do you incur, make it affordable? We could be making a heck of a lot of, you know, Airbnb units and that's it. So I think those are are two things that we should be very conscious of that are both happening or need to both happen. How do we get more units that that are dwelling units for anybody to live in? And how do we help them satisfy a need we think is important?
Yeah, I would just say quickly, apologies, Mary, the short-term rental issue, I would encourage you to investigate it separately from this effort. It's something that I think we all hear anecdotes in town and and in other towns. But I would say categorically has not been studied in Norwich. So I would just encourage more, more research and analysis to see what you actually accomplish.
Now, okay, Mary?
No, my comment was going to be on the policies for short-term rentals, but with the eye on on Airbnb and how do you, how do you persuade that from being the the driver? So covered. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like on ADUs, there's a good effort happening and we give it a little time and you'll come back with some specifics. And I think that's precisely what we need on on several of these topics, whether it's multi-use, density, multifamily, that if if somebody's working it, they've got specific marching orders, they're going to come back in in a few weeks and say, here are the changes that would encourage housing. Here's what the state law says. Here's what the neighboring towns are doing. Then great, that's, you know, that's what we need on several of these. So AD, ADUs is covered. I guess is the is the message. Great. And then just to touch on.
Hold on, Jan. Bob's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
I was just going to say related to the renting and the 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 ADUs, I was under the impression that the state money that's available right now, I forget what it was, but something up to like forty thousand for ADU addition or conversion. I think required two years of renting, at least six-month lease or something along those, like five months, five years or five months. Yeah. So I, I mean, not to say that we shouldn't look at it, but there are levers out there to incentivize longer-term use that, I mean, at least publicizing the existence of the money might help.
Definitely, definitely. I I'm not aware that anyone in Norwich has taken advantage of the VHEP program. But yes, subsidy programs like that surely could accomplish multiple.
What is the definition of affordable housing in Norwich? If I, you don't, is there a specific definition? Or because I want, are we all thinking what, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah. So maybe that's a very good question. And so let's focus on on that, on the question that I just mentioned, which is, let's assume we wave a magic wand and we create fifteen or twenty new dwelling units in the Village District of Norwich. Ta-da, we've done it. Now, how do we, or what have we done as part of that that makes it be what we want? And if we say we want affordable housing, then to Mary's point, what is that animal? And how do we have an agreed-upon definition?
Jan, before we get off the ADU question, I I'm not up on the state law. So I'd like to know, you know, to the extent Brian leads the charge, you know, how how big can the ADU be? Can it be multifamily? Et cetera. I'd like to know all of those sort of, I mean, right now, the town is constrained, constraining the ADU because it's got to be the size of a thimble. And it's got to be a relative, more or less. So I'd like to know what all the possibilities of that are in in the context of that memo. Sorry.
Okay. No, so so that's, that's a question to roll into your work, Brian. I don't, I don't think we have.
Yeah, sure. I don't want to sidetrack any. We can talk about it.
Right. Right now, yeah, whatever it says now, it can't be more than X percentage of the main unit. And but yeah, that that should be addressed in in your work. Yep. So Jeff Lubel, do you want to give us a starting point on defining affordable housing?
Yeah. I, so, you know, there is a definition of affordable housing for purposes of the density bonus in the subdivision regulations, but I would encourage us to avoid coming up with a specific definition of affordable housing. And here's why. The reality is that everybody needs housing they can afford. Right? And a well-functioning housing market includes housing at a variety of different price points. And and really, that's what we should be striving for, right? It's so that people of different incomes have housing at a price that makes sense for them, they can afford. And and if we just, you know, if we said affordable housing is housing that rents for this or or that, you know, and we created a whole bunch of policies, we would get housing exactly at that level, but we would miss the diversity of the housing stock that we need. So I I think we should be striving to create a more diverse housing stock that includes housing that rents and sells at a variety of price points and not try to pick just one. So that's number one. Number two, I think we need to acknowledge, right, that there are limits to what we can do through our zoning code. And that really to produce housing that's affordable to, you know, modern income households is likely going to require some kind of subsidy from some source or it's going to require economies of scale that are very difficult to produce, you know, here in Norwich. So I I think what we, what we can do that's feasible, right, is we can create a zoning code that facilitates duplexes and triplexes and quadruplexes and garden-style apartments and it just creates a range of different options that will, you know, mostly sell for prices that are lower than what housing currently sells for in Norwich. I don't think it would meet most definitions of affordable housing. Right? To do that, I think we're going to need to partner with a nonprofit. We're going to need to, you know, that's what we were trying to do, right, in the parcel that's north of the transfer station is to, you know, utilize town-owned land essentially as a subsidy for housing. So I I I just wouldn't let, you know, wouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I mean, I think, I think we can create, you know, we can focus on creating a more diverse mix of housing. We can work on attracting and partnering with nonprofits and with others that have the ability to create housing that rents or sells at below markets. But we're not, I don't think unless we're willing to spend a lot of money, we're not going to be able to sort of directly, you know, create housing, you know, for 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 low-income people, you know, just by ourselves here in Norwich.
Okay. Interesting. Ernie?
You're muted, Ernie.
I I disagree with Jeff in terms of not needing a very clear definition of affordable housing. I think it's based, my, my, my objection is based on the fact that we're dealing with sort of equitable kind of issue, a matter of fairness. And and we're also dealing with sort of an intractable problem, which is housing tends to 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 be sort of the province of the well-to-do. And in a, in in our rural environment, individual housing or maybe small clusters of housing and stuff like that is is what we need to sort of keep the costs low. But the thing is, is no matter what we do, the land keeps on being an expensive, a problem, a, a real hurdle. The other thing that I'm concerned about is if we don't have a good definition, I mean, is is somebody who is affordable housing going to be something that somebody who's earning a hundred thousand dollars, which, you know, housing is getting to be unaffordable for somebody even in that realm? You know, is, is that going to include, is, is that the kind of person that requires, you know, some actual social action, which is what we're really talking about here? You know, and 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 it has to be taken. We do need to have some social action going on here. I mean, and it should be, it maybe has to be in conjunction with other things too, you know? I I've long thought that that if people are going to put, let's say, an ADU that is intended to be for, intended as affordable housing, there should be some kind of, 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 you know, first of all, on one hand, a tax break for them doing that, because otherwise it's going to get taxed as just a small expensive house in Norwich. And speaking as a listener, that's what will happen. So so we have to find a way to make sure that that doesn't happen. And I'm not sure the Planning Commission can really handle a tax kind of, you know, some sort of a tax thing, but we can agitate for it in any case. And and the, the, and that's a bit, and the other thing is, is that you, you, that would, the corollary to that or the other side of that is that if somebody decides all of a sudden they're going to stop making ADU affordable, then they have to pay penalty, kind of like current use. You know, I I mean, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the fact that, you know, affordable housing, on one hand, you know, if you, if you look at the more general definitions of it that I've read, is they, it talks about somebody who's in a sort of percentile or class of income. And and, you know, they they earn some amount relative to this percentile or some definition like that. And and that could be fine in part, that 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 might be necessary. But again, we have to make sure that that it doesn't become just a way for the already wealthy people in the town of Norwich to just invite more wealthy people into the town, or people who are only slightly less wealthy. And and it doesn't really do what, what, you know, I've been following the affordable housing thing and and I always loved what Grimoffit and Ralph Hybels were doing way back when, about twenty years ago, when they started bringing the issue up, which was affordable housing means making housing so that we have a really bona fide mixture of people, working-class people and so on in the town, which the town has emptied itself of because of housing prices. So, you know, I I think, I think we need, we really do need to define what afford, you know, what affordable is going to be, affordability or affordable housing is going to be in this town, because otherwise I think it will just be, it won't really be affordable. I mean, I think people, you know, I I have, I have friends that have had to live in camps, you know, live in their cars, things like that. And they all have jobs. You know, they have real jobs, they have full-time jobs. Why are they not able to afford housing in the place in the, in the, in this region where they work? And Norwich should be there, should have some of those people in it. And I mean, if it's going to have, if it's not going to be sort of a monoculture of just wealthy people, which is unhealthy, I think that's unhealthy. You know, and and I, like I said, I think that we need, we do need a
Okay.
I think we need the definite definition. It should be made sure that it really is people that really need help, not people that are just a little bit stuck.
Okay. No, let's, let's, we'll keep that on the table. Jeff, I got several people here, Jeff Lubel and Christian. Jeff Lubel, do we have you?
He's muted.
Go ahead, Christian. We'll, we'll wrap back around with Jeff.
Yeah. So I guess hearing different, there seems to be different solutions to the problem. And so I agree if, if the, the
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me now?
We can. Yeah, let, let's, yeah, let Christian go and then we'll wrap back to you, Jeff.
Hold on. Yeah. So I think to me, it's, it depends on which, which, which avenue we're talking about. If the goal is to use, provide some sort of subsidy, provide subsidized housing, I agree, a definition is key. We can talk about that. We can discuss the merits. If the goal is to revisit zoning policies that are limiting housing construction and new unit being built, I don't think a definition is applicable in that sense, because anybody who's creating new housing stock isn't like, it's just not going to work. Like who would ever, how would we be able to set the market rate for a triplex in Norwich for the next five years? It just, it just doesn't make sense to me. So if the goal is affordable subsidized housing, sure, let's talk definition. If the goal is to increase housing stock of different, different sizes, different types, different locations, then I think there's no need for a definition. And I would just point people to like the national conversation. One of the major issues nationally, Vermont, Norwich, Upper Valley, everywhere, is we've just seen a slowdown in housing construction and new units coming online, which has just increased the cost across the board. And so my only question to this group is if we go down this path of creating new units, I'm all for it. It just, it feels as if, as though Norwich can't relieve the market pressures in this area. And so putting new units of any varying size or shape, they're still going to be more expensive than we might want them to be. And they're still going to be more expensive than surrounding, similar dwellings and surrounding towns. And that's just something that we're going to have a really hard time to combat, just with our housing stock in Norwich.
Okay. Yep. Mary, then. Jeff, okay, Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can't hear me?
We can.
You, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to find a place where I have, I have cell bandwidth. So first of all, I agree completely with the gentleman who just spoke. I think the question, when you think about affordable, defining affordable housing is defining it for what purpose? You just have to ask yourself that, right? You don't define affordable housing for purposes of the zoning code necessarily, because we don't control the ultimate price of housing. We just control what gets built and the price of housing gets controlled by the market, right? So we can create a more diverse housing stock. We can create duplexes and triplexes that are going to be somewhat less expensive. We're not going to be able to produce, you know, housing for the lowest-income people. I agree with Ernie that we should create opportunities for them. That's what the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is working on. That's not what this Planning Commission, though, has the ability and the capacity to do. So just, when you think about definitions, just ask for what program and what purpose. And for purposes of a subsidy program, absolutely, you should, you should define it. But for purposes of trying to diversify the housing stock, I agree, there's no, there's no need.
Okay. Mary?
I just want to reiterate, I think, what Ernie and Christian said, that this sounds like a kind of housing expansion policy, not necessarily one that's affordable housing. And, you know, Ernie, you said the cost of land is the challenge. I think it's the cost of land, but it's also the cost of living in this town. Everybody who opened up their tax bill this week or this last month or, and saw the increase that we have and knowing that there's going to be another big one, is not a great town for affordable housing. Because it's expensive to, the entry point is expensive and the staying point is expensive. You know, I think the ADUs, I mean, many ways, I think it's a, it's a great idea for for housing expansion, if we want to expand housing. But it's going to be for people who, first of all, have enough land to do it and have the cash to 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 build it. Because we did a small renovation at our house and I can tell you, it's not just the land that is expensive. It's really bloody expensive to do anything right now. And so this seems to me to be zoning to support the wealthy people in the community who can afford to build this and create a, an income stream in their backyard, which may or may not support workforce housing or, you know, it'll definitely, you know, I agree, Jeff, it'll be, you know, it'll be great, somebody will have a place to live, which can can argue with that. But but I, but I think we've got to be careful. If we're talking about this as an affordable housing effort, then I think we need to be talking about twin pines. We got to be talking into places that are specifically able to think about how to structure the housing so that you can actually impact the house, the house price a bit. And Dartmouth did a bunch of things where they kept the price low on their housing over generations to enable people to, you know, have a lower entry point well below market. So those are just different strategies.
Yeah, I think that we, we're talking about to separate it out. Yeah, we're talking about a housing expansion, increasing a diverse populated housing stock. That's one topic. How does the town feel about it? And then how do we implement what the town wants relative to just number of housing units of what type, where? Um, and then what are the incentives? What are the levers that we have or that anyone has to control the cost of that housing, the mix of that housing, who's in it? Or, and, and so those are two separate issues, but both of them are on the table. Uh, Ernie?
I, 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 I think that, you know, the, the, the issue of affordable housing is it requires a sort of a whole, like holistic look at, at a number of distant, different disciplines and a number of different kinds of, uh, of, 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 um, people. I'm gonna just say different kinds of people, um, and interests and so on and so forth. I mean, I think that for one thing, the reason we need a, a, a definition is because we need to have a sort of some kind of a bedrock upon which we can make whatever, whatever things the Planning Commission can do, we have to have a reason for doing them. And that becomes part of the, the definition would, would be part of that. Okay, I think we'd have to go into the planning, it would actually probably go into the town plan as well. Um, but I'm thinking, for instance, you know, the state has, has made it so my, the simplest way I can put it is that you cannot have uh, the, no, no town is now allowed to say that you can only have one uh, dwelling unit on a subdivision, a subdivided parcel. You have to be able to at least have an A D U as well on it. So you have to have two dwelling, you, you have to, you can't zone for only one dwelling on a, on a, on a subdivision any longer. That's my understanding of the new law. Um, but, you know, um, what we, we, we have to do is, you know, so that means that lots of people can now have an affordable dwelling unit, uh, uh, you know, A D U, I should say not affordable, auxiliary dwelling unit on the property, everybody in the town can. And they, so that means everyone can try to create another str- uh, 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 income stream if they want. But the thing is, is that, you know, creating affordable housing is not really amenable to creating a, uh, 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 another income stream. The purpose, somebody would have to be able, would do it is if they're doing it for altruistic reasons. You're not gonna do it, you know, if you're looking for a profit, you're not gonna be, you know, you're not gonna have affordable housing. It just can't happen. Um, the, 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 you know, you have to sort of take, i- at least in the current environment, you have to sort of take it on the chin if you're gonna try and provide affordable housing. I mean, uh, uh, Norm Levy um, has, has, has approached me in the past for putting an A, an A D U on my property, cause I have the room. Um, it's not the most brilliant place to put an A D U, cause this is about as far out of town as you can get. And, you know, there's a lot of other needs that, that people that make life in this town unaffordable, such as the long driving distances and cars you need to, to get winter and all that. But the point I'm making is, is that um, I, I would be, the, 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 the notion that Norm is trying to put in place is finding someone who's going to, who's willing to accept some of the burden and take it off the people that are gonna move into the house. It's not a pri- it, it, you know, I don't, I wouldn't look at it as something if he, if he, you know, if we could do it as, as something that's gonna make me money. I'm gonna do it because I wanna try and help this issue. You know what I'm trying to say? Um, and it's not because I have money, I'm not made out of money at all. I'm, I mean, my place was affordable at one time. That's why I could have, why I'm in Norwich, because it was more affordable than anywhere else I could find. At that time, I had to move. Um, so, um, and that also says something about the town as well. At one time, this town had people like me moving into it. You know, with their small fa- new families and all that sort of stuff. Now, you don't have that anymore. You have basically fintech and, and tech, you know, tech guys moving into town. And, you know, they got the big, biggest, big salaries and stuff, and they're only here for a while anyways. So you need people that are actually committed, I mean, that's why you need this definition, cause you have, gotta have people who gonna know, yeah, you can have an A D U, but the state doesn't say it has to be kept as affordable housing. So now it's gonna be up to the towns and so affordable, when, when, when somebody says they wanna put in an A D U, you have to ask them, is it gonna be affordable housing or is it gonna be market housing? And, and if it's market housing, they should be treated differently from the person who's gonna put in an A D U for an altruistic reason. You have to, you have, and you can't, without a definition, you can't, you can't support that. And, you know, there'll be court arguments and all kinds of crazy stuff. Whereas if you say there has to be a distinction between the purpose, not just the fact that you have an A D U or any other kind of housing, but this housing is specifically for this particular purpose and it, and, and it, and so, you know, if there are any breaks, you go, at the time, that, 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 that somebody who puts that stuff up deserves because they're doing, you know, they're bearing a burden that they may, may be difficult or anything. Whatever, you know, those are taken away maybe. I don't know, there's, 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 it's gonna take more than just the Planning Commission to deal with this. We're gonna have to be talking to our legislators and asking for state legislation that helps this too. And, and it means that you have to have um, also a definition so that you can say, this is where we're working from. You, the definition can change, you know? It's not, doesn't have to be set in stone, but you gotta, it's good to have a strong guideline so that we can say, this is, this is affordable housing, and this, even though it's in a building just like affordable housing, is not.
Okay, let's, I got, I got a, I got a queue here, Ernie, thank you. I do, do think that the the question of who subsidizes is, is what comes up. We, we have housing stock and then housing stock made affordable requires subsidy of some form in Norwich. And that may be a kind neighbor that lets you park a tiny house on their lot, or it may be the town incentivizing with tax credits. That's, that is somebody subsidizing in various ways. Uh, Christian?
Yeah, so I just, again, I, I'm all for the conversation of subs- like, I think that's a great front, for our conversation, but I, I do think this, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, for Brian, but this idea of increasing the housing stock, the types of housing stock is a separate conversation than a twin pines type model or a subsidized building model. The, the idea here is to loosen regulations to allow new houses to be built that are in a different type, a different style. And will they be, meet the definition of affordable nationwide in the state of Vermont code? Absolutely not. Like, they will not in the town of Norwich. But having more one-bedroom rentals for people in the community, it, all it does is on a market, like market economics thing, is it just having more supply helps with market factors. And so right now, if you come to this town and there are seven, what, seven two-bedroom homes that are for rent within walking distance of Mary Cross School, and that's all, all we have in the entire town, it becomes very much a limiting supply for new families, the people that Ernie was talking about who want to move to this town. Does it solve everything, making it so people can build three more of them? Absolutely not. But it's a start in the right direction, is how I would look at it. And so, yeah, th- this idea of like reducing zoning regulations to allow for this natural growth is positive. In a separate conversation, this idea of building subsidized or more traditional affordable housing.
Yep. No, it's, it's a, that's a very good point. I would, I would in, in part to answer the, the point from Jeff or, or Brian's point of view, there are kind of two stages to the increasing housing stock. Uh, plan or what we would do. One of them is simply to be in accordance with current state law. So there, there are things that we need to do, uh, that would enable more housing, like Brian just said, you, you have to allow an A D U or, or somebody said. You know, so there, there's a whole subset of increasing potential housing stock that is simply us catching up with state regs. Then there's what might we wanna do over and above that on the topic of encouraging or increasing housing stock. Brian?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jan and, and Christian, you're absolutely right. Um, if you haven't already, folks who are new to the group, I'd encourage you to go back to the current town plan and especially the housing strategy. A lot of the topics that have come up in, in the conversation so far are spelled out there. Unfortunately, this is the last year of our five-year housing strategy. We should get on, uh, renewing. Um, but it, it lays out a lot of these issues, uh, there and you'll see some familiar, uh, conversations. Uh, the town has, as Jeff said, def- the definition, two places of affordable house. The density bonus and the policies, uh, for using the town's, uh, affordable housing evolving stock. There's no new definition that needs to be created for the town. Um, organizations like Twin Pines, which have been mentioned, have to comply with other definitions, although they, they may be the same or similar, uh, to receive various funding. Um, so the definition conversation is kinda set when we think about what affordable, affordable. Um, what I would say is, uh, on A D U specifically, but on housing in general, we're not gonna be able to be more restrictive than state statute. So, uh, we cannot, absolutely cannot say we allow A D Us that are two thousand square feet and only have one parking space. Uh, and you can put them above commercial space as well as residential. Uh, but oh, by the way, you have to rent them, uh, to someone who's under fifty percent of it. That is more restrictive than state statute. We cannot do that. So, uh, as Jan's saying, we can encourage that kind of practice in many ways, um, but we can't write into ourselves.
Interesting. So even restrictive in a way that looks like you're encouraging affordability, it is not allowed?
No.
Okay. Jeff Lubel?
Yeah, no, this is a very productive conversation. Um, I, I, I do wanna just talk about, uh, one, I, I agree with everything that Christian said, uh, and what you're saying, but I do wanna know one thing, which is that to the extent that we want twin pine habitat or some other affordable house developer to build in Norwich, they would benefit from increased density as well, right? It's not just wealthy people, it's also, uh, twin pines, right? Or it's also habitat. I mean, if they need, you know, to be able to do more units in order to make their numbers work, they benefit as well. So I, I, I think that the efforts that we're doing, uh, liberalize the zoning code will increase supply and market overall. Not a huge increase, but it's, any increase is helpful. We have such a shortage, but also make it easier for affordable housing developers to build here. And so I, uh, or, you know, just would encourage us to really, uh, you know, uh, uh, try to get out of the way, right? You know, if, if, if there's a property that has the wastewater capacity to support more units, let's, you know, let's let them build and, um, we're mostly built out anyway. It's not like we're gonna see a ton of new development, but we'll get something and that's, something is, is more than what we have now.
Yeah, hey, Jan, I don't have the ability to have a hand icon, so I can throw my hand up all night long. When can I get recognized? I'm sorry, Jeff, that's my, my vision. Uh, just holler if you need to, but, uh, yes, Jeff Goodrich.
So, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, a lot of issues are, are being conflated, which is, which is good. Uh, I think in a way to have a conversation. I think, uh, the macro question is, uh, as we've talked about, is there a way to increase housing stock? Uh, a- a- address current state law and, uh, uh, look at if you can build on your specific property or home, uh, why not do that? And, and I wanna be, uh, uh, I, I think clear in a, in a simple context. The problem with Norwich is water and sewer. And so, uh, uh, in bluntly, there's not a lot of opportunity for water and sewer. So to the extent you can do an A D U or, you know, a second lot, I'm all in favor. Or, or to the extent, uh, something like Jeff Lubel said, which we've talked about on the Affordable Housing Committee and through my whole planning career, you know, duplexes, quadruplexes, multifamily, if you can do it, just change the ordinance to accommodate that if you can do it. And, and what, when I say when you can do it, it just means do you have the water and wastewater capacity? In the village where you have Norwich Fire District, you have the water capacity. There, there are not a lot of parcels in town that have the wastewater capacity. With respect to, uh, broader capacity and affordability, I agree with what Brian said. We've already got a definition for affordability in the, in our, in our bylaws, so to speak. Um, but I think it is important to think about, uh, leveraging affordability going forward. So to the extent, uh, there is an opportunity for economies of scale, how do we, how do we do that? How do we leverage it? Economies of scale, just to be clear, with Act two fifty, uh, it's, it's likely dozens of units, uh, especially if you don't have the infrastructure in place. And Act two fifty says, anything more than nine in this community, uh, we're gonna make sure that your permitting costs are so exorbitant, we're gonna do everything we can to discourage you from developing anyway. So, um, I, 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 I think to the extent there's an opportunity, we, maybe we look at, uh, uh, leveraging affordability in the context of higher densities, which personally I think state law and maybe Act two fifty regulations would, would better contemplate if we think about the town and village status, uh, um, designations at the same time. A few things, uh, we, we're talking about costs. I mean, I, I really appreciate what Mary said about the starting the entry and staying points in this town. Uh, I, from my perspective, I've seen in the last three and a half years of, uh, twenty percent net inflation for everything. For construction costs, I'm seeing, uh, inflation from fifty to a hundred percent. Um, New Hampshire housing costs, I was just talking to folks in both New Hampshire and Vermont about the Office of State Planning, whatever the current term is, uh, saying, you know, just slightly post-pandemic housing costs, average housing costs in, in New Hampshire is three hundred and fifty K, today's cost is five hundred and forty K per unit. Uh, this area, Vermont and New Hampshire is being targeted by, uh, many people moving, uh, here with lots and lots of money. Um, I was just told by a regulator in New Hampshire that he's handing out five shoreline applications daily to each individual staff member. So the, the, the permit requirement from a state, uh, perspective, because of the, the demand for land in this area is enormous. We're also looking at, I'm seeing folks where, uh, or private businesses who are trying to, to acquire parcels, uh, as Ernie said, for profit, et cetera, and, uh, you know, flip them, you know, blah, blah, blah. I wanna also mention, um, so, so to the extent we think about higher density economies of scale, I wanna talk about a density trigger that may leverage affordability. There are other things like, uh, energy that play a key role in, um, uh, you know, affordability. Uh, the legislature in Vermont was talking about increasing, uh, taxes on, uh, frankly, poor folks like me and my mother, cause we don't have, uh, uh, the right, uh, the right stove, the right oven and so forth. Let, let's think about what we're really doing to the people who make less than a hundred thousand combined salary in our communities. Uh, cause I think our legislature has gone in a terrible, terrible direction with respect to, uh, energy concerns. And I guess, uh, uh, the, uh, one of the things Mary said and, and was mentioned by, uh, someone else as well, that I thought was great, was the notion of short-term rentals, the Airbnb thing. Uh, we can definitely bake that into our regulations. That said, the folks that I've talked to region-wide, when they're looking at A D Us, it's typically for mom, you know, my, my old aging sister, that sort of thing. When you think about rentals on your individual property, if, if you're, if you wanna get into the rental market, get ready to get beaten to death. That's not why people are doing A D Us. It's a brutal market. And so if it's an individual unit, maybe multifamily, I, I don't know what it is. Uh, there, there was a, let's just say hypothetically, a developer in Hanover who had uh, a number of her family members move into her home and that was frowned upon. And I thought, why? It's great. Regardless of the number. Uh, so, uh, one maybe final comment is the question about affordability. Affordability and subsidies, sub- subsidies come from our tax dollars. So I wanna be clear that affordability, affordable housing, as in Twin Pines, is not necessarily affordable. So the question is, uh, are there options and ways in which we can bake into our rules, like what the Woodstock Community Trust has done over time? Uh, true affordability without utilizing, uh, tax subsidies. Uh, I yield the floor after that. Oh, one more final thing is, I, I'm excited to think about, uh, as, uh, uh, as I say this, that, that Norwich might consider itself as one of the four core towns as, uh, as our Upper Valley micro palm.
Yeah, the, the regional, I do think the regional topic is, is a good one to understand. Um, wh- what is uniquely Norwich's responsibility and role, um, on this topic? Uh, given what we have for infrastructure, given what we have, you know, uh, what our neighbors have and how does the whole thing fit together? Uh, so having a regional piece to this is, is definitely important. Um, just a question, I see Ernie, just a second, on the, on the wastewater side, Jeff, and, and, you know, I, I know you're right, and I've heard you say it many times, that the the septic capacity is the, the limiting factor. What, what are the knobs, if any, in, in zoning or in? So in the village district, is there anything we can do? Is there anything we can do, we, the planning commission, or we, the town, that affects septic capacity? Short, short of going out and making a town sewer, are all those regs that say what soil it is and what's a permissible system, are those all state regs and we have no say in it?
So Jan, they, they are, the, the state rules address water and sewer, period, dot. So I think an important issue for the village is for any onsite wastewater disposal system, you have a hypothetical well shield of 100 feet down gradient and 200 feet up gradient for an onsite wastewater disposal system. So that means if you have a well, you can't have an up gradient wastewater system close to the 200 feet. Because we have this municipal water system with a Norwich Fire District, it eliminates consideration, you know, of, of well issues. It's a huge issue. So from my standpoint, by way of example, you know, back to something we've talked about and Jeff Lubel said again most recently, hey, if you can build on it, if you've got the site capacity, build on it. How do our regulations enable that? Because especially with the Norwich Fire District, we, we have enormous potential for water. And if you've got the site potential, maximize.
Is there any, and I don't want to go too far on this, but is there any option for localized slash community septic? So if somebody's got a big backyard somewhere in the village and they don't need it, is it just absolutely not feasible to say, I'm going to do a, a community septic for five units and, and somehow make that available?
So Jan, downtown, the Montshire is a great site for wastewater, you know, for, for onsite wastewater. Route five south is a great site for wastewater because it's got access to the Hartford system. They're, you know, the Willing Hands land at the intersection River Road and, and Church Street Route five has, has a spot for a possible community system. Beyond that, I can't think of a single site in the downtown area for a community system. And when I'm, when you say community, I'm not talking two or three. I'm thinking, I can't think of a site that would accommodate more than five or six.
Okay.
Now, now, if you go up to Bogie's Pit, you know, you could put 300 units up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Ernie?
Well, just as an aside, there's also another pit that is just up the road, sort of just south of Bogie's that, that's waiting for being actually used too. Because they tried selling it a number of years ago. And it would be, and I've thought of mentioning that to Jeff and Brian, as a matter of fact, that that's there. But my, I just have a question and, and, and it's, this is what, and it's, it's, this has been troubling me for years. I, I want to ask, what is the point of merely increasing density in a town that at this point in time is becoming more and more exclusive? I mean, unless we're, unless we're, we're willing to control the, the cost of living in the town, at least for a small, a small portion of the population that can't otherwise afford to live here, what are we doing? I mean, just, just increasing the density, all that's going to do is attract, right now, unless we put some controls on it, all it's going to do is attract more, more wealthy people. I mean, this town, that's what, that's what this town is right now. Is, is it's for, it's, it's a bastion of the wealthy. It is becoming a gated community. And, you know, we, we, we can't keep encouraging that by simply making it so the developers can put a bunch of McMansions, you know, close to each other instead of, you know, having to actually pay the current, the current amounts, you know, a lot, you know. I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the value there unless we're going to actually do something that, that is, I'm going to call it socially positive, I, which I is, I think, creating affordable housing. I think, I think just catering to, you know, allowing the town to be more dense, but still exclusive, that's just a, that, that's stupid.
Hey Jan, in terms of order, I see my hand, Bob's hand, then Jeff Lubel's hand, if that's okay?
Yes, that is the order I was, I was seeing. So.
Okay. So just quickly, you know, so if we have an opportunity for downtown building that exists, to put four, five or six multi, I'm going to say multifamily, so different rentals in it hypothetically, it's not going to be the wealthy. Whatever they're going to be rented for, maybe it's four or five college students, but it's definitely going to provide a very different sense of diversity in a downtown walkable setting, more than we currently have, where the wealthy are not going to rent those individual small units.
Yep. I mean, I think, and then I'll go to Jeff and, and Bob, but my, my point to make is, is part of what we need to do when, as we frame these questions, is to ask the town what it wants to do. It is possible that the, you know, one pulse of the town is they want to have more housing that's similar to what they got. They, you know, it is ours to have our opinion, but we also need the pulse of the town. Jeff Lubel and then Bob?
Yeah, I, I, I want to second what Jeff Goodrich said. I, I, I think it's, it, it's true, right? That it's expensive to live here and that the people are moving here tend to have higher incomes. And I am working very hard to promote housing for lower, for, it's more affordable to lower income folks. And I, I do think that increasing our density is going to make that more possible by facilitating, making that development more cost effective. But, but even if the development is not targeted to low income families, it's still going to be less expensive than what we have now. And that I think is important. I think it's important to try to accommodate a, a greater range of, of housing types. I mean, think, think about someone who wants to come in, for example, and, and develop housing geared to seniors who want to downsize. You know, they're going to build smaller units and they're going to, you know, going to sell them for less than what, you know, it would cost now, if you can even find a unit. Is it going to be affordable to low income families? No. But it's going to be more affordable than what we have now. So we, so I, I think a duplex, a quadruplex, they're all going to rent or sell for lower prices than what we have now. So let's do all of the above, right? And again, we should be mindful of our capacity. We're not going to build a ton of units, but we, we could do something. Let's make a contribution to the overall needs of the region in terms of supply and also, you know, create some dedicated affordable units. And hopefully, you know, we'll have some more opportunities to do that going forward. For now, this is what we can control, which is, 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 is our density.
All right, Bob?
I essentially, I was going to say more of the same, that, you know, if we, if we, my take on it is if we, you know, continue the course that we're on now, it's a few houses every year on multiple acres, or maybe we have the opportunity to shift to multifamily, multi-use in existing building stock. I mean, I'm not sure that there's much of that, but, but anything helps. So yeah, more of just what, what the others have said. And maintaining, maintaining some sense of urgency, I think on it is good also. We all know we're in some, you know, statewide and region wide, there's, there's an issue and hopefully we can maintain the thought that there is something we can do on it.
Can we get, I just, I like the fact that we have on the ADU front, we have a specific group or people that are working to bring something, propose something. It sounds like on the multi-use, multifamily density question in the village, we have the same need, there are state laws that have to be understood and, and changes proposed to comply with them. There are things other towns have done that we can do, you know, without diving into the fun of subcommittees with, in the, and creating a new subcommittee. Can we get a couple of people who will raise their hand and say, I'll do some work on the specific question of changes to our bylaws that are needed for state reg compliance that relate to density, multifamily, multi-use in the village?
Yeah, yeah, this, Jeff, I, I, if, could I encourage us to go beyond state law? And to think just about what, what are the policies we think would, are needed, you know, with regard to density and multifamily? Because most of the, like the minimum zoning policies that have passed recently in state law, they really only apply to areas with, you know, public wastewater systems. So they don't technically apply to us, even though they, they kind of set a standard for what the state thinks. But I, I, I'm happy, you know, I think the Affordable Housing Subcommittee would be happy to, if that would be helpful, to put some ideas, specific ideas on the table and share some examples of other towns and all of that.
Yeah. So I have a question about, you know, I'm, I'm in a performance-based zoning perspective in, in, in the village. If you can do it, we don't have to think about it. So what can you do? Multifamily duplexes, the triplexes, the quadruplexes, whatever. So my gut reaction from a, from a basic zoning change would be performance-based. If you have a site that can do it, you know, you, you have all of these options available to you. And if we really want to create a higher threshold for review, then do it as a conditional use.
Yeah. Okay. Just, Bob, I saw your hand go up. Was that to participate in a?
I'd say, yeah, if, if you were looking for someone to try to generate a communication to you that maybe could be included or talked about in a future meeting, I'm happy to quiz Jeff and maybe Jeff and Brian as well on that front and try and put something down in writing.
Okay. I mean, from, from the way I read or, or the, the subcommittee conversations we've had with the select board, I'm perfectly happy to create a working group of planning commission members or, or simply to have it be a point person or two that's below a critical mass that can do the work and come back to us. So Bob, we may, we may take you up on that. Mary?
Yeah, I just want to respond to your suggestion that we get the town plan up to state regs. And, you know, while Jeff's response was we can do better than that, sure, but that's going to take a while. So I don't see why we would not do the one and get that, you know, get it up to state regs and see what we need to do to do that. And then I think the other conversations are more complicated one. And, and then have that as a second step.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a given that we need to be compliant. I mean, we essentially need to be right now. And, and to, to just jump back for a minute to the, to the DRB conversation, I'm just curious, if, if something came before the DRB tomorrow that was compliant with new state regs, but not our current zoning, is it the responsibility of the DRB to know that the regs have changed at the state? Or is the, the applicant is going to say to them, hey, I'm going pursuant to this new VSA? Or is that somehow the PC should help the DRB know that that's the case? I'm, I'm, I'm just interested to this point about the interim, before we officially are compliant, how do we help everybody do the right thing? Jeff?
Yeah, Jan, the DRB is constrained by our current rules. And if somebody wants to appeal, you know, off you go. There's, there's no latitude there. There's no case law that I'm aware of at this juncture, given the new state law changes anyway.
Okay. So I think it's a good thing to keep in mind and keep us kind of linked into, to activities at the DRB because, and, and to Mary's point, in terms of, let's get it on paper, what we need to do to be compliant with state regs now. Because I would hate to put the DRB in a position of having an applicant teach them about law that the planning commission hasn't told them about beforehand, since that's our job.
Jan, on the town plan front, to Mary's point, the way we've looked at this in previous years, I'm saying the planning commission. So we don't pay specific attention to state law. Typically what happens, we'll reach out to Peter Gregory or Kevin Geiger, whomever at the RPC. They're working with, you know, community housing development, et cetera, and say, okay, tell us which sections of the rules. So sitting here, we don't have to do much as a planning commission. We could do this on the next agenda item to say, hey, let's ship our town plan to the RPC. Dear Peter Gregory and staff, tell us what we need to update to be compliant. We have to do almost nothing other than receive their comments, say, okay, well, let's suggest those changes accordingly. And then do the two or whatever it is, public meetings that are necessary, ratify what, what, what the RPC said, then kick it to the select board so they can spend six more months. So we can spend very little effort to get this going over the next year.
Okay. Might I, that's great. And I would, I would propose that we do a combination of take Bob up on his offer to be point person and Jeff's idea to use Two Rivers as a resource and, and get that in motion ASAP. So we would have Affordable Housing Subcommittee digging into details of ADUs. That's going to overlap with some of that because that'll be part of what this, but it sounds like you're going over and above just complying with state regs. You're also going to tell us some more things we might do to, to increase diverse housing stock. But Bob, if you can take that on to say, go to Two Rivers with a specific charge from the planning commission to look at our town plan and I, and our regs and say, what do we need to be compliant? And bring that back to this group and just tell me when you're, when you've got something that needs time on the agenda. I think that'd be great.
All right, done.
And, and again, just to prepare us, there's probably not going to be a lot when it comes to density that, that is a change in state law. So it might be a short conversation.
Right. So then we go over and above. Then, then we say, all right, we've got our baseline. We want that to be moving forward. And then we look at, at going over and above. Brian, did you have something? I need to, I need to wrap this up because we.
Yeah, yeah, no, something very important distinction to Mary's point. And I'll put on my hat as the town rep to Two Rivers. I would say the zoning regulations conversation should be distinct from the town plan. The regional planning commission is working on their own regional plan. They have a whole bunch of issues to sort out, including their own future land use. I would say this is not a great time to go to them with town plan proposals if you expect it to survive their next one. Whereas zoning is a distinct, discreet issue that they could address and advise on. And we could move through a process much more quickly. So.
Okay. That's, that's very useful. That's very useful. So Bob, I think if, if that's, if we have agreement in the group, it sounds like that's, that's a pretty obvious useful constraint to say, let's ask them for a focus on, on zoning regs, the zoning bylaws. And that, so is zoning bylaws or zoning and subdivision regs and just not, not plan first and foremost?
Okay.
Just bylaws?
I mean, yeah, yeah. So informally, Kyle has been willing to give advice on, on certain issues. And I'm sure he would in general. But if we want like their advice on the zoning regulations writ large or for housing policy in general, I don't know if that's going to be free or quick. Like I said, Tedford and Sharon have just gone through this, but they're with Two Rivers' technical assistance. Those are projects, not like a little committee where we have some calls with Kyle. I just want to like, put some expectations around this where they have a lot of expert advice. They can give it to us, but it's, it's not like quick and easy and there's no cost here. So cost, just cost understood.
Understood. That's useful. And so Bob, if you, if you can take that bounding, then again, dig into it, use the usual regional condition, you can start with Kyle, and then come back to us with your findings.
Talk to you because I don't agree with this.
Okay. Can we, I think we need to, to pause this. Are we in a position to say, pause it until we get something back from at least these two activities we've identified? Or do people want a standing agenda item on the next agenda, even without those reports?
I'd like to see it as a standing agenda item personally, even if there's nothing to talk about.
Anybody else?
Seconded.
Okay. All right. So we, we will leave it as that. And I think what I would like to ask is that we essentially for tonight, do the same thing with capital planning, park that agenda item and go to agenda item seven, candidate review. So we make sure we get that done tonight.
So moved.
Can, can, can I just ask, since we're, we're not. Can I just, uh, ask, since, uh, we're not involved in that, the affordable housing subcommittee, we we have one more item, which is to approve a prior minutes. Can I see if there's a
Run through that quick, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Is there, um, it's in the packet. Is there a motion regarding these minutes?
Jeff, I'll make a motion even though I had to be in another town that night to approve.
You you were there, this is from July.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you weren't the last one, but yeah.
Move to approve.
Great, thanks. Is there a second? Uh, Brian seconds, great. Uh, on favor, Jeff, what do you say?
Aye.
Brian? An aye for Jeff. Uh, okay, passes three zero. Thanks. Uh, we are, uh, we are now adjourned.
All right, great. Thank you, guys. We will, uh, we'll be in touch.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, let's, um, let's move to our agenda item seven. Uh, and this is to discuss uh, new candidates for the available planning and zoning position. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss this topic.
So moved.
I think Vince, you've got wording.
Uh, yes, again, off the top of my head. I move to enter executive session pursuant to the VSA section three thirteen A. Three, to consider the appointment or employment of a public officer or employee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor of entering executive session? Unanimous. All right, I, let's see, I'm going to put Amy in the waiting room. We've got Norwich. I show a Norwich, Vermont and planning Norwich. All right, I'm planning Norwich. That room is that. Okay, we've got everybody. All right. So just some background, uh, and then we can jump in.
You want to stop recording?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Christian. Yes, I do. I knew there was one other thing. I'll pause recording so I don't. Okay, I would entertain a motion to leave executive session.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor of entering public session in the planning commission?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous. Um, okay, I would entertain a motion relative to the candidates under review for the position of the open planning position at the town.
I I I would like to make a motion that, uh, both candidates appear eligible for, uh, the zoning administrator position. And, uh, covet your input to refine my motion, Jan.
I would, I would prefer so that it's aligned with with what's going on in the hiring that we say either the the PDZA or the, uh, current open planning position in town.
PDZA is fine with me, or PCZ.
All right. So that's a, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Discussion on that motion. Ernie?
I cannot vote for anyone who's going to be put up as a planning director. We're breaking the law and I'm not going to be part of disregarding the law. Just so that we can make somebody sound fancy. That's it's 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 idiotic and I I does object completely to it. And 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 in I don't really have a favorite of either of these two. I, like I said, um, considering what everyone said, I I, either one of them is is fine, but I'm going to object to calling him anything other than a zoning administrator. And if we can't get past that, then
That's my motion, right?
Understood.
You don't need my vote. And I, but you do, you will get my criticism.
Understood.
But my, Jan, my motion was P the CA, what planning commission's
I know, but that, so my that is my, uh, that was my friendly amendment to that motion is to say either the open planning, uh, position at the town of Norwich or to name the position that is open, which is the advertised position that these two candidates applied for. Which was planning director, zoning administrator. That that is what they applied for. We, for us to support them at a different job is not, uh, is not pertinent to the conversation. It doesn't do us any good to say, we support you to be dog catcher if you applied for the job of of PDZA. Ernie?
I think, I think the fact that the person or the people that have been pushing that it's called the planning director are people that are willing to break the law. And we don't have to break the law just because they want to break the law. And I think that that's, uh, it's it's not a good idea and not a good practice for stuff for us to sanction their breaking the law. I think, I think, and Jeff does not have to accept a friendly amendment either. So
Ernie, so I have not, my motion, I misunderstood, did not include planning director. And so I'm glad to withdraw my motion. Or I can amend my motion and then vote against my motion. Because I I won't vote for anything that promotes the violation of the law as well.
Okay, so I'm, I I don't care either way in terms of a new motion or uh, how the votes go, but I I think it is that it is important that this group makes a statement relative to the current open position. Uh, it it is not, it is not the time or or appropriate for this group as a whole to try and change the job description where
Fair enough. I'm going to amend my motion to say the open, open planning position. And then, uh, uh, and did you vote, were you the second, Bob?
Yeah, you accept that change, Bob?
Okay, and then as far as discussion goes, I'm going to vote against my own motion.
Okay, you're free to do so. Any other discussion on that motion as amended?
And someone just, where where do we stand with, uh, where we are with the actual motion?
To get with the statement, it was both candidates appear to be qualified for the open planning position. And that's, are we in, are we just making a statement that that is what we like? We motion, like, we need a, uh,
It is, it, I, I mean, I've
You're just making a statement and that's it?
We're making a statement. The planning commission is stating that both of these candidates, uh, are qualified in our estimation for this job, that we are, that's, that's what we've done in the past. Um, and that's all that's needed now.
Okay, I just want to get the wording right, that we are motion to state that both candidates appear to be qualified for the open planning position.
Yep. Any other comments on that motion? All right, I'll call the question. Jeff, how do you vote?
Nay.
Bob?
Aye.
Vince?
Aye.
Ernie?
Nay.
Christian?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's five two. Motion carries. We're, okay, thank you.
Yeah, would you share? Just like, uh, to power, so to be know that we were unanimous with respect to the potential qualifications of both.
Understood. I will make that point, uh, when I talk to Brandon in the morning. Uh, okay. I would take a motion to approve minutes of August ten.
Uh, August ten or twenty?
August ten, yeah.
You're right. No, I I have it. So I have it wrong in the
Oh, yeah, yeah, on the the agenda was incorrect, but, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty.
Second?
Is that Christian?
Okay.
Who said, who was second?
I was asking for a second. Christian is second. All those in favor?
How about discussion?
Yes, please.
So I I had a real problem with number four. Because it only partially reflected. So I I would like to see number four reflect. Peggy Allen showed up and made a claim that she had a purchase and sale agreement with a landowner, and there were time issues related to that. As far as the rest of the discussion, I'm not so concerned about that.
I mean, I, I did not hear such a definitive statement about a PNS being in place, partly because I had talked to her before and I knew that there wasn't one at the time. Um, but that it was close. So, um, I'm not as, I'm not as concerned about the specific wording, but what do other people think?
I I'd have to look at the video, but I remember discussing that she's discussing a purchase and sale. I, yeah, I guess I don't remember the particulars.
I was not here.
Okay. Does anybody? Well, Jeff, if you want to propose a specific change, then people can agree to that change if it's, if it
I would, I would lead with a second paragraph. So Peggy, I don't, if we want to say Peggy Allen uh, uh, basically explained to the group she's pursuing a P PNS, that's fine. Uh, I I would be that generic. And there are time issues related to that. And then went on, went on to describe some of the reasons to include parking, bloody blah. Uh, and then, then you can take the first paragraph and subordinate it to that, as, you know, the group discussed. Uh, so that I'd be, I'd be okay with it.
No, that's, that's accurate to my recollection, Vince, if if you've got that enough to
She's seeking a PNS and there's, there's time constraints.
Start, start with the second, start with the second paragraph, move it to the front and put Peggy Allen came before the group. Explained that she had a, she was working on a PNS for the property, which included time constraints. And then comma, explain some of the reasons, dot, 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 and then second paragraph after that. That's accurate.
Okay. So there's three paragraphs in that section, you're saying move the
The first paragraph to the second paragraph.
Switch, switch one and two, and then add a little caveat around PNS on, on the, that's now one.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay. All it, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August twenty as amended? Unanimous, or Mary's abstaining wasn't there?
I abstained.
Yep. Um, all right, I know we don't have any public comment because we don't have any public. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn so I can go have a snack before the debate. Oh, wait, I do have
Do we land on another meeting this month?
Yeah, yeah, that, thank you, Christian. That was the one thing I did want to touch on. So I got a little bit of comment back from people. Right now, I would say the, and let me paraphrase this first. My thinking was, given kind of, I don't want to proliferate subcommittees because it's not worth the fight. Uh, and the discussion around it with the select board, that to me means that this group as a body needs to have the kind of working sessions that we just had on affordable housing. Um, and if we're going to do that, then we need to have a few extra meetings. If everybody can't come to every meeting, that's okay. It's still, you know, we just need a quorum. Um, so to that end, that's why I'm trying to shoehorn in a special meeting before the next, next regular meeting is going to be October eighth, second Tuesday. So um, right now, um, we have, let's see, am I right? Yeah. So the, we had the twenty-fourth. I had a couple hard, hard to do on the twenty-fourth. We have the first. Um, if we do the first and the eighth, then we're having two meetings a weekend in a row, which is kind of a pain.
Twenty-fourth, Jan, and anybody, I would like to ask, uh, because there's time, if there are ideas about agenda modifications, I'd like to offer some thoughts uh, to you directly.
Actually, I I I would like to at least pose the option that if we do feel like we need to jam in more meetings, that we maybe look a month ahead and think about that rather than a week ahead. Um, it's, my schedule generally does not permit for a lot of the last minute changes. So I mean, if you think that we need more meetings, then can we look into November, something like that, so we can schedule them and and manage our calendars?
I think it's important because, uh, if it's going to be, uh, energy, especially with Mary, I think it's important that she's able to attend. Uh, so I I I'm going to take Mary's side in this.
Right, the twenty, the twenty-fourth did have that as one of the ideas on that. So we had the lot consolidation, I'm gonna, uh, I I had Cheryl, you know, Cheryl is planning some to be there on the twenty-fourth uh, for the, uh, for the listers. If we took certainly the solar site, anything to do with solar sighting come off the, the twenty-fourth, um, we could do a couple of the I know that, um, Peggy Allen has worked with Kyle to come up with the detailed definition of farmer's market and and can simply submit that to to the group. Um, we definitely need to deal with the listers, and there are probably a couple other smaller things that are worth nailing, uh, that we could knock off on the twenty-fourth. Uh, and then, uh, to Mary's point, if we roll, if we did the eighth of October, so regular meetings are going to be the eighth of October and the twelfth of November. If we could also do, say, the twenty-second of October. If we did the twenty, the twenty-fourth. We did the twenty-fourth as a special. Can can people, does people want to throw out, and we can get one more special in either October or November? Can people do that? And then we try and find that, that one more.
So, uh, the one in September on the twenty-fourth would not include solar. And it may be, it may be a truncated meeting.
Yeah, I think we we like, it's it's logistics and things, there are time constraints, things that have been hanging. We're not going to open up capital planning and and try and dig into the meat of that. Um, we would do that. We do the the meaty stuff at regular meetings. And if we need special meetings to to catch up on logistics, then that's what we'll do. So, uh, let's, let's do the twenty-fourth with that understanding. And let's, um, let's, on the eighth. Let's be careful about our agendas for the next couple. Let's look out a couple of months with agendas and decide if specials are needed and and when, and to Mary's point, do it three months out. Uh, we can tell what we need to do. Okay, so I'll plan a special meeting for the twenty-fourth. Uh, and if you can do it, do it, but we will not, uh, we'll have a quorum, but we will not be dealing with solar sighting. And capital planning will be on the eighth. Go on ahead. Ernie?
So that will be at six thirty, correct?
Twenty-fourth at six thirty, yeah. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Take a motion to adjourn, quick. We gotta have a snack before the debate. All those in favor?
Dinner.
All right, thank you, everyone.